I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
And I forgot my book. I'll be right back.
Go grab that.
I should grab that. Oh. Sorry about that. I moved it to the second shelf and didn't deliver it.
Okay, we'll call.
Pippiya?
Here.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Baikman?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Barron's?
Present.
Throm?
Here.
ADO, we have a call.
All right, first up is the approval of amendments. Does anybody have any amendments or changes?
Uh, yes, I have one.
Yes.
Under special meeting on page six, uh, on the third line, under discuss which plan the city will use, on the third row, third line, I think it should say irrigation of wetlands or something, or combination, I don't think. You see where I mean? The three options are new cell, irrigation of wetlands, maybe?
No, irrigation of wetlands.
Or wetlands.
Irrigation or wetlands.
Or a combination of these options. You've got four options there.
Right.
Right. It couldn't be those options or a combination thereof, but the wetlands are a separate kind of thing from irrigation.
So, so actually you've got four options there?
No.
No. Three options or a combination of the three, of the two.
Okay.
Approved June 22nd meeting?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
ADO.
Approved June 29th special meeting?
Second.
Any changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
ADO.
ADO. Uh, next up, we have public comment. Does anybody here for five minute public comment? Okay. Uh, now as we get on to the, the business and discussion items, we do need to add, uh, resolution 2020-06 COVID on our business items.
What is this, make page?
Uh, it's resolution 2020-06. It's, it's something we need to approve to get reimbursed for COVID expenses from the, from the state and county.
Who want to do that first?
Uh, kind of between two and three, I think is what they were thinking.
Okay.
Um, if, if that's all right with council.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, under notices and hearings, we need to add rat stop 2020-07, under there for discussion. Anybody have a problem?
Nope.
Anything with that? Okay. All right. Uh, moving on then, first up is the wall heels, Dean Thomas?
Good evening, council members. Uh, I have a few things we need to discuss. The wall is still coming as of last night. I have another meeting tomorrow with the lady in charge, so we will know a little more then, but I need a few things from you guys. We're not going to have a Legion ball tournament this year, that's been canceled. So, in lieu of you folks donating the porta potties for the Legion ball tournament, I would like to know if you would be willing to donate those to the wall when it gets here, which will be here, I think you have a, a kind of a guide in front of you as to when it'll be here, that should be the 17th, no, the 15th of September. I would like to know if you guys would like to donate those porta potties.
So you need the porta potties from the 15th through the 20th?
Yes, sir. We need one handicap and two regulars, is what they've asked for.
What was in the trailer when we got it?
Um, the $1,500 trailer?
Yeah.
The, it had like six bathrooms.
The one's handicap, wasn't it?
I think. I'm not sure.
I don't remember, because I know it was up in the air.
Right. It, we, we would just, in this instance, get two, um...
It's two standard?
Two standard and one big handicap one.
Why don't we use ours that we have down here?
Um, because we never use it anymore. It's not, it's not well.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
We need to get them out of our sight then.
Yeah, I know.
These, uh, porta johns, do these companies have to, have they changed their procedures as far as cleaning and protocols and things now with all this?
We haven't had...
I was gonna wonder if some of them wouldn't even want to mess with it now?
No, they're, they're still using it.
Availability's no problem?
Yeah.
Okay. I saw if there was one company that closed, there's probably gonna be tenants in the market.
What is it called? Frankfurt Porta Potties?
Yeah.
Frankfurt is still available.
They're still available?
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I think if we were gonna, I mean, we've already accounted for doing that anyway, this would be an worthy, equally worthy, if not greater worthy cause to do it.
Should we look in to see if they got some of the hand sanitizing stations?
Yeah.
They usually have those, they can hit those.
And also being the one with the little foot foam water and all that?
Yeah. I just think if we're gonna do the porta potties, might as well do that too.
Yeah. No harm in that.
Maybe to approve the porta potties requests for the wall, traveling wall, from September 15th to September 20th?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Isn't that in lieu of ball tournament? Uh, I'd only gonna have two.
We, we, we only ordered that ball tournament one when the state was here. We, we don't do it normally.
Okay.
Not normally.
And also add hand sanitizer to them also.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
ADO.
ADO.
Okay, item number two then. This thing is pretty, pretty far spread. There are a lot of people, a lot of clubs are talking about this, and you know, we've been working on this for two and a half years. Uh, we would like to ask that from Carolina Street to the gates of the ballpark, we would like to see if you guys would let us from the 17th and to the 20th, when the wall is actually open, if we could restrict parking on the east side of Veterans Drive to allow more emergency vehicles if they need to get up there. It gets pretty tight if both sides are, are filled out. So if you guys could discuss that and see if you'd be interested in that, that will be up to you. You have to do that. Uh, also, from the 19th to the 20th, which is two days, there's gonna be a lot of traffic up in that area. I've already discussed this with the chief and, and the sheriff both. I have to touch base with the ambulance personnel yet, but we would like to have on those two days, parking restricted to school buses, because I know we have Axel, Valley Heights, Marysville, and Frankfurt, and, uh, the Lutheran School are going to be bringing buses up there so the kids can tour the wall. So if we could do the north side of, of Carolina from 19th to 20th for school bus parking, that would help us out also.
These take, these items take resolutions.
These items take, you guys need to make decisions on the parking.
Right.
Uh, and the last thing, I don't even want to think about it, but we have Black Lives Matter protesters within 77 miles of Marysville. We have them in Manhattan, we have them in Lincoln. They like these kind of things. Now, the ballpark is a public area. Uh, I was asked if I would see if maybe you guys could make a proclamation or talk to your city attorney, if during that week, that the, the wall is here from the 15th to the 20th, if we could make some kind of proclamation that that would belong to actually the city of Marysville, if we had a problem, or those people could be escorted out. The wall has specifically stated they do not want protesters inside, and it's all surrounded by fencing, so it should be pretty easy to do. We have law enforcement involved, we have the National Guard involved, but they do not want them inside where they could get a hold and damage the wall.
Have they had problems so far?
Some, yeah. The one in Morton has been vandalized twice. Uh, I don't know how you go about doing it. I know there's probably a way you do it, but that's totally out of my ballpark. Mr. St. John Beno Moore and Adam, Mr. McNish, so you guys can discuss that. That's why we're two months out, so we have time to make these decisions. And that's really all I have, and I appreciate the, the donation of the porta potties. Thank you. The rest of it is gonna be up to you guys. Uh, like I said, I work for the street department, Dale, your chief, everybody's on board. If you need anything, don't hesitate to call, because when Mr. Oldy left, he just kinda gave it to me. So, because he's out of town, so if you have any questions or anybody calls you about anything, have them call me.
Okay.
I think, I think you have my phone number somewhere, send it? Yeah, most likely you do. Okay. Uh, that's really all I have. I want to say thank you. Uh, just for your information, you're probably gonna see, the way it stands right now, the people I've talked to, there's gonna be 300 to 400 bikes here that day when we bring the wall in. So it's gonna be, get a little tight on parking up there probably for that one day, and then we set the wall up on Wednesday, and then it opens, no, we set the wall up on Tuesday, it opened, no, we set it up on Wednesday, it opens up at midnight Thursday night, or Wednesday night, and it's open 24 hours. So, it's coming in from Omaha, down 77. If you want a good view of it, as it comes into town, I highly recommend you go up to the State Line Church. If you notice when you're looking north, that's quite a nice view up there, and that little valley in there. WIBW has already said they'll be here, KTSB will be here. I haven't got to the Advocate and KNDY yet, but that's in the very near future. So, that's really all I have, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Be sure and again, you'll enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we vote on the street closing or discuss?
Well, we have to have a resolution drawn up, but I guess, does somebody want, does somebody need to make a motion to have a resolution drawn up, or just?
Do you want it that way, or do you want us to just write the resolution?
Consensus of council, do you want us to write a resolution?
Yeah. Is it two separate resolutions, one for the bus parking on Carolina and?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if we can combine them, but...
Is there parking allowed on the north side of Carolina now?
No.
Is it? I'm trying to remember. I don't ever see anyone park there.
No one's ever parked there, but I, you know...
On the north side?
I don't think there's any signs.
Casey's?
There was.
Behind Casey's?
Yeah, behind Casey's.
Six o'clock in the morning, I'll find out.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that, maybe we look into that...
On the north side, there's not, there is, but the south side it wasn't.
Because that's, that's semi-traffic, you may not want to park them up there.
I'm not disagreeing.
What about bringing them around and parking them where the fire station's gonna be? Because you can double stack them in there on the backside of the...
Yes, that'd be great. If, because the buses aren't gonna care how far away they go to park.
No, because they just drop the cars off. So... You know, if they, because you could get probably three buses wide in there pretty easy.
Yes.
I think we just work with them and come up with some...
Even Lakeview.
Yep.
I mean, you got all of Lakeview they could park in. Even that upper parking lot over at Lakeview, you know, if they're out there across the street, park in that, you know, they could get around and back out.
Uh, we might try to map out some parking for everybody, just to go, this is visitor parking, and possibly, just a thought here, uh, some temporary signs that show where you can cross and where people are crossing, because they can park over at Lakeview and walk over and stuff like that. So we can parking map, okay. Um, I can work on that.
And then you'll talk to McNish about?
Other things. I have some thoughts.
Wanted people out of their area.
Um, if we're concerned about protesting, um, I've seen instances, I don't know if it would apply in this, where you're gonna have a designated protester area, um, where you're not restricting their rights to protest, but they're not restricting everybody else's rights to access.
We did that once. Why? Did this wall come before?
No, no, we had, they had a protest...
We had the West Borough Baptist Church.
Right, and why, and we restricted where they could be.
Soldier's funeral.
That's right, it was a soldier's funeral, and we could restrict where they went, so we have done it before.
It was a five, five funeral, I think.
That's right. That's right.
So, we'll all talk to John about that.
Yeah, I know that there's a way. Because I know you did it. It was so many feet from...
Yes.
Right. Yeah. Right. And that was done at the Legion, that funeral was.
Just have to make sure they're not, if that truly does happen, let's make sure they're not gonna be interfering with traffic up there either.
Right.
Because that's all private ground up there now.
That's true.
And before it wasn't.
That's true.
Yep, we'll work on this.
All right, uh, next up, we have resolution 2020-05, the pool bond payoff.
Move to through resolution 2020-5, pool bond payoff.
Second. Any discussion? We'll call on this one.
Sure.
Now, I got one question. When we do this, we're actually gonna pay off the pool bond, right?
Yep.
And we're gonna have money left for the rest of the year.
We won't be paying it off till this pool season's done anyway, so we'll have all winter to build that account up to what we want.
I think you should read the resolution.
This doesn't affect any taxes or whatsoever, right?
No. No, it does not.
Okay. Resolution of the City of Marysville, Kansas, requesting the repayment of certain Marysville, Kansas Public Building Commission Revenue Bonds, Series 2013. Whereas the City of Marysville, Kansas Public Building Commission, the commission has previously issued its revenue bonds, Series 2013, in the original principal amount of $4,280,000, of which $3,345,000 currently remains outstanding for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, and equipping a public swimming pool, including all buildings and structures related to such facility. And whereas the project is currently leased to the City of Marysville, Kansas, and whereas the governing body of the city finds that in order to achieve interest cost savings, is desirable to refund a portion of the 2013 bonds and provide for the redemption of the 2013 bonds maturing on or after September 1st, 2021. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Marysville, Kansas, Section 1. Instructions to call certain 2013 bonds for redemption and payment prior to their maturities. The City of Marysville, Kansas, as tenant, under the certain lease agreement dated as of February 26, 2013, between the tenant and the commission instructs the Marysville, Kansas Public Building Commission to conditionally call, redeem, and pay prior to maturity the 2013 bonds maturing on or after September 1st, 2021, and to provide any and all necessary notice of redemption pursuant to Sections 3.2 of the Resolution Number PBC-02, adopted February 11, 2013. The redeemed bonds shall be called for redemption and payment on September 1st, 2020, or as soon thereafter as practicable, um, the redeemed bonds shall be redeemed at redemption price equal to the principal amount thereof, plus accrued interest thereon to be, to the redemption date. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after its adoption and approval by the governing body of the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Are we getting ahead of ourselves as far as, because we use the word PBC a lot of times?
Mm-hmm.
Don't they kind of have, don't we have to have that extra meeting that we always have?
No. This is because the city controls the bonds.
I understand that, but also that was created to be able to issue the bonds.
This is what Bond Council Mary Carson said we have to do.
All right, I just wanted to ask.
What we had done incorrectly, there was one line in the old one that you approved that made it not correct, made it void, because of how we're handling it now, and so she wrote this, so that we could do this.
Okay, but then one other question there, about the resolution that we passed to reissue bonds, what gets rid of that?
There is nothing to reissue.
Pardon?
But if you pay all these off, there's nothing to reissue.
Mm-hmm.
There would be nothing left to reissue.
We've got a resolution hanging out saying that we're gonna reissue bonds.
That's why this had to be rewritten. That's what she's told us, just, she would rewrite this and this one would take care of it.
So basically, if we pass this, that one becomes null and void?
Exactly.
Because there's nothing for it to apply to.
Right, because there's nothing for it to apply to. That's what she told us.
But that's, we're not...
Right. Good question.
Somebody's gonna come back and say, hey, you didn't do it right.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm happy.
Okay, all right. We'll call. Pippiya?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
No.
Barron's?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
7-1, it passes.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have resolution 2020-06 COVID.
Move to approve resolution 2020-06 COVID.
Second. On that there, I was watching the news tonight, the mayor, the governor extended their declaration, or not the governor, the city of Topeka commissioners extended their declaration to go till December 31st. And what was their declaration? Of 2020 on COVID, for some reason. Do we need to extend ours out, or?
We, we don't have, the city of Marysville doesn't have a declaration. We've always followed the county's lead on this.
Okay. Like I said, I heard that in the news tonight, and I thought, I didn't remember us making a declaration, but I wanted to make sure, so...
No, we, we never made a declaration.
Extend this out to however far we need it to.
Right. No, we just, we go off, the county made their declaration, it, it de facto included us.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Do you want to, do we roll call, or you want us to do a roll call on this one? On the resolution?
Roll call.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes, I guess.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
ADO?
Can I ask a question on this?
Yes.
Are we testing the employees at all once a week, or temperature, or?
I don't think we have anybody that's been...
Think we gotta do that?
Well, I mean, I think, I don't know if that's really up to...
We, we've been sticking with the health department. If we ever have a concern, have whoever call the health department and...
So if somebody's symptomatic, you direct them?
Direct them to call the health department. The health department is pretty good at, at going, okay, this is, we're concerned about this, or we're not concerned about this. So far, any calls, and not to divulge anything, any calls that have been made to the health department, uh, came back with no concerns, so.
All right, uh, next up, we have the cat backhoe buyback purchase.
Um, this is the, um, basically the buyback that we talked about in the budget workshop, nothing changed, brought it to council for your guys' approval, um, did talk to Foley again, um, there was a question as to whether we needed to add another counterweight for the four in one bucket. He said, no, it would not need any more modification than it currently has. Um, and there is a, there's no buyback. There is a trade-in program that they have, it's similar to the buyback, so, um, just a little different rules on that. But as, as before, this is actually cheaper, we're paying less money for the new one than we paid for the old one back five years ago, with more options.
Yeah? Moved to approve purchase of the cat backhoe.
But, so now, the, we're taking 50,000 out of the equipment reserve?
Yes.
15 out of the water fund, and 15 out of the sewer fund, so where does the additional 9,184 come out of?
15, 80. Um, oh shoot, I didn't miss that, thank you. Um, I'd, I'd probably split it between the water and sewer.
How much is left in the MER after this 50?
Through, here, that's back here. That is 500,000, right, here we go. No, we, we paid that. Um, be a little less than, it'd be about 475, 475,000. But that would be without the normal transfers that we do every month, or, no, we don't normally transfer in the MER.
No. No, we did purchase another truck out of there though.
Yeah.
This ordinance.
Yeah, and that's the $45,000 that's shown here. There's, there's an expense there.
From this month, this is July.
Uh, well, there is a $45,000 expense. So after the $50,000, there's 475,000 left in there.
So then you're gonna take the 9,184, you're gonna split it in between the water and?
Sewer. Yep.
One, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Due to the fact that you changed the wording from trade-in to a new deal?
Mm-hmm.
Is the contract stand the same as what we had last time we talked about this?
Yeah, what are the differences between the trade-in versus the buyback?
They includes, um, hour restrictions, um, you, and he said, we didn't have to do anything right now. In fact, I think I included that.
I overlooked his name.
I might have, um, well, it was an email from Foley, I thought I included it. Um, but he said it was a bit, almost the same, he just, uh, they used years and hours, um, for the trade-in version of it, whereas this gave you a price upfront, uh, right away, that what the, what they would get, if you followed the terms of this, that they'd give you at least this, so it...
It's still a buyback.
Pretty much.
And we're still gonna be able to use the buyback on this new one?
Yes.
So are they in the future changing it to trade-in, or now?
Yes.
Well, on, on this model, or not this model, but for us, on this new one, it would be the trade-in program.
I just don't want to see some kind of change order deal when we're all done, it's a set, it's a set deal for a contract and that's it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna depend on how many hours are on the machine and everything at the end of the five years.
Yeah, and they're usually pretty happy with our machines when they get them back.
All right. Any further discussion?
We need to amend that motion to split that 50-50.
Just, uh, yeah, um, the remainder, and I apologize, um, I did not include that one. Um, yeah, just that remainder into water and sewer.
Okay. Deal with this motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
ADO.
Next up, we have the fire station proposal, Geotech Engineering Services from TerraCon. And TerraCon came in low bid on that.
Yeah, that was a low bid, um, had to come back, um, TerraCon and CFS, I believe. Um, yep, CFS, and, um, BG, who is our architect on the fire station, had recommended going with TerraCon as the low bid. Um, this Geotech, um, will help us... This Geotech will help us narrow down, will help us establish what foundation we need to put down, whether we need tieback rods or not for our fire station, so that's why BG is recommending we go forward with the TerraCon, with the Geotech with TerraCon.
Basically, this is for the holds, too, isn't it? I mean, test holds?
Yes, yes.
Is what we're talking about?
Yeah.
At the fire station?
At the fire station on this one. Because depending on, and Diane's met those, you've been at all the meetings, I think, haven't you?
Most of them.
Yeah, and it, depending on what they find when they do those core samples will change how thick our retaining walls and everything need to be at that fire station, depending on what they find with the soil, so.
Could reduce the size of our walls?
It could.
And save us money.
Depending on what they find.
And if it, um, the, the rods that I was talking about, they, one of the parts of the plans calls for, possibly calls for rods to go east and west through with the concrete, and if the, if the, if the ground is found to be proper to be able to remove those, that reduces the cost as well, and it also allows less restriction on the drainage that would be sitting under the, uh, the fire trucks.
Move to approve bid for TerraCon for $3,850 testing the four holes at the fire station, proposed fire station.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ato.
Okay, next up, we have the governing body handbook.
This was attached to your email, but you each should have had a, we gave each of you a physical copy when we first got on, or when we first created this book, and it just was never formally adopted by the council, so that's what this is about. It's a good instruction manual for, for the governing body to know what's going on, I guess, so we'd like for you guys to approve that.
How old, how old is the last time it was updated?
We, 2018, I want to say, is when...
It was printed.
Yeah, isn't there?
I'm gonna look.
Yeah, January of 2018. 2018.
And it was, that's when it was updated the last time?
That was when it was created?
That's when it was created.
And it's never, we just never adopted it. It's never changed. It's still the same?
Okay, because the one I have is the one that Denny had, I think, so.
Right, well, and that's...
That one would be the league one, because we never had one of these.
Oh, okay, then the one I have...
We gave this to you when you got on.
Okay, okay.
To kind of give you an overview of how, what council does...
Okay, well, some of the stuff I have, that was, was passed on.
Oh, sure, sure.
So I didn't know when it came about, okay.
Right.
All right.
Move to approve the governing body handbook.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ato. Uh, next up, under notices and hearings, we have rat stop 2020-07.
Move to approve Resolution 2020-07.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
What got this up?
I haven't read through it yet, honestly.
A complaint?
Complaint.
A complaint that there were rats coming over to other people who live there, houses close by. And so this is what our code book says how we need to handle it. We, we did send a notification, and then to continue on for, he started to clean up, but until, this gives us the leverage to move on. Mr. McNish, our attorney, wrote this. So that we would be able to continue on to get it cleaned up and get that stopped.
How old is the point?
June 16th, I think it says on your letter.
June the 16th, I didn't...
Or June 18th, I'm sorry.
June 18th?
Right, and so then you could go down there and see that he started to make some improvements. It just guarantees he finishes it.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, what's gonna happen to him if he doesn't?
We come in and clean it up and charge it to him.
There we go.
That's what that gives us, the right to do.
And that gets charged to the landlord, right?
Yes. Yeah, to the owner of the property.
Yeah, okay. And then we get maybe some of it back someday when there's a share sale.
Well, or taxes if the landlord owns more property, you'll probably get it.
That's true.
A lot to clean up.
It is, yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah.
And then they'll have to treat the rat.
Nothing a grapple with some dump truck can't handle.
That's right.
No sense in being gentle about it.
Behind those fences, it's full.
It is.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ato.
Uh, next up, we have the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion about any of the items? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Ato.
Uh, next up, we have appropriations ordinance number 3727.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance number 3727, the amount of 217,932.26.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Piffia?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Ato.
Okay, next up's Austin.
All right, um, first thing on my list is wastewater Geotech. This bid is from TerraCon, and the reason why it's only from TerraCon, because it was contingent on, they're already gonna be up here. So it saved us mobilization and all that. This is the, the, um, the first part, or the one portion of this is testing of the, where we would put a potential lagoon cell out by our existing lagoons, and that is denoted by the four boring sites east of existing lagoons, and they listed out a price for it, $7,865, and they list out everything that has to go with it, all the testing and stuff like that. They also additionally, at, at our direction, are looking at boring some more, at least two locations out in, uh, east of the river, because we came up with, or Kevin came up with an idea to put wetlands over where they put...
Where the burrow pits were.
Where the burrow pits, right here, put wetlands, because right now, our lagoons, they empty out, the, the pipe comes right here and dumps into this river with the clean water, and what, what we would be proposing is putting a lift station right here where that existing pipe is, and pumping it over to somewhere over here to have a wetlands, where we own 100, 200 acres, I mean, lots, lots of space. But after looking through it, there's a high spot right here, where's that tree one, right here. Where the old wastewater treatment plant was. This is kind of our optimal spot, right in here, where they could put 25 acres of wetlands and not worry too much about the, the floodplain. So we wanted to get some samples out there with the Geotech to see if that would be optimal wetland location, because so far, all the other locations show a lot of clay, which is not optimal, but from this floodplain map with the blue on page 77, you see all the blue is floodplain, and that's 15 feet lower approximately than the west side of the river, which kind of bodes well, because it could take that top layer of clay off of there. So that's where we want to look at, at least two locations, but we want to prepare if we want to get more. So they requested, Daniel, with BG, requested that we include an additional $3,000 to cover boring costs in that location, in that area where we could potentially put wetlands. So that would be $7,865 plus $3,000, but I would, if you would denote it, I mean, just the $7,865 for boring by the lagoons in the cell, plus $3,000 for the, the additional, the alternative site. Up to $3,000.
That's quite a lot more expensive than what Daniel thought it was gonna be, I think, isn't it?
It's $3,000 more.
Well, the, oh, you're talking about the original one? Yeah, he did say, I thought he said four to six, but I could be mistaken on that.
Yeah, I didn't think he thought it would be quite that expensive, so.
But if we can use this, it saves us a lot of money on the lagoon project, correct?
It, it definitely tells us exactly, pretty much what we could put in each of these locations. If we find that it's 15 feet of clay over here, there's no use in wasting our time in the alternative site.
Unless it was to use it for an irrigation system, too.
Well, no, if there's 15 foot of clay, we're not putting irrigation there either.
If there's 100 and some acres there, you could still get rid of a lot of water, whether there was clay or what.
It, but if it's in the floodplain, the KDHE didn't, they said, watch out for the floodplain, you'd have to create a lot of, to keep the water there. So it doesn't get washed directly into the river. So that's why KDHE, we have talked to KDHE, and we have talked to Army Corps of Engineers, and KDHE said, watch the floodplain, and then Army Corps of Engineers said, stay 300 feet away from the top of the levee. And those are the only instructions so far.
I mean, it's clean water, but I mean, right now, we currently dump it in the river, so it wouldn't be any different than pumping it into the wetlands, and, you know.
Right, and, yeah, that's pretty much it.
That's what I'm getting at, is for the holes, it don't matter.
No. Well, yeah, yeah. Okay, so if, if you guys don't mind approving that, we can get that going.
Move to approve TerraCon for the wastewater Geotech, $7,865 for test drilling at the current lagoon site, and an additional $3,000 for the wet well and what do we call it?
The alternative site.
Alternative site.
Alternative site.
Yeah, the alternative site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, last on the list are financials, and general fund is 135,727 dollars above where it was this time last year. It's mainly due to that transfer from bond and interest that will help fund the, um, the fire station. So that's a little, it gives a little bit, bit of a bump. The water fund increased by 20,204 dollars from May's ending balance, but still 50,000 lower than last year's balance at this time. Sewer fund also saw an increase of 32,000, but that's about to drop because we're, we're gonna pay for CIPP. They've completed it, about to send a bill for CIP, for the Kierd and Place project. Sales tax, fund saw an increase compared to June of 2019, which, this comes when everybody, when, okay, so the state saw a 12% decrease, and they saw it a month, because they get the taxes a month in advance for distribution to municipalities, so they saw overall that the state was decreased in sales tax by 12%. Then we get ours a month later, and we got an increase, which is great for our sales tax. And what the league has found is that the, the decrease hit main, a lot of urban areas where people are traveling, going to buy stuff. The theory is people are staying home, buying from local places, buying online at their home, and all that sales tax, when you purchase like Amazon, because they have a brick and mortar in the state of Kansas, they pay local sales tax, so when you order on Amazon, sales tax comes to the city. So it helps us, and everybody gets told to stay home. It helps. In theory.
Someone positive about all this.
Yeah, so that's where we're at in sales tax right now. We did just see, we did just pay for the, in last month, you'll see that we paid for the, no, the Broadway project, so that decreased, that large expenditure decreased the sales tax, but that was expected.
When's that supposed to start?
What?
The Broadway project?
Oh, I, that purchase I was just talking about was...
Oh, that one?
Over there.
Or 77.
We just paid for that, well, the other one, we've, we paid for two months ago.
Okay, I was like, oh, we already paid it, but...
Yeah, we already paid that one. That one, they still looking at September 13th to start, because that's our late start date. So, 7th and Broadway, that, I ju, I just got that email, so. But if, no other questions, that's all I have.
All right, uh, we'll move now to standing committee reports. Does anybody have anything on street?
I'm gonna put this under street, see if I know where else to put it.
Yes.
I had two phone calls here in the last two days about 12:05, Carolina, Walter Morrow makes place again. It is worse now than what it has ever been. It's in the parking, in the driveway. It's, it is worse now than what it has been last time we were there and cleaned it up.
Well, being at, being at home a little more, working from home, he goes down my alley at least three or four times a day with a golly with stuff on it. You know, I don't know where it's even coming from, but...
He's in court proceedings right now.
I was gonna say, I thought he was in the fair.
Whatever, if we need to hit it, hit it hard again.
We, we, I think we have to wait for the judge to, to rule on it before we go...
Wait for what?
The judge to rule on it. That, he, I mean, it's a long process. We wondered why nobody ever used the court before to do nuisances, and we're figuring that out. Not that the court is a bad thing, but it's, it's a long, drawn-out process.
But he can't live in a house if it has no electricity and no water, can we proceed with condemnation then?
I don't know.
I'm just asking if we can prove that he's living there?
Without John being here, I, I would, I would, I would assume that he'd say, let the current proceedings go before we make an adjustment, adjustment on our, on our tactic.
But like I said, I've had complaints on it. That's the only reason, like I said, it's not good again.
And it's, yeah.
I had phone calls on it, too.
So, like I said, where do you bring it up at, so?
Does anybody else have anything on streets?
How long does Gary figure he's gonna be out on trees?
Um, I haven't gotten a, I forget where he stopped. They were at 10th Street today, and they're going that way.
Yeah, they're going east?
They're going east.
West to east?
West to east, yeah.
Number streets first, they'll come back and then do north to south.
Right. Right. Both Gary's crew and Kent's crew was working on it today.
Right, yeah, I seen them both out. I'm just curious, they had?
No ETA on how long it takes. It took us, took us one day to get the streets cleared. And then after that, he was going back and picking up on the curb, so.
I bet they'll be added a couple of weeks yet, there's a lot of debris.
There's still a lot of trees down.
Yeah, there is.
That are still out in the street.
I was surprised when I went out to the dump today, how much.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We had, when we opened up the dump all day on Thursday, Gary said we had 300 and some trucks come out. So we definitely opened it up on Friday and we expanded the hours on Saturday and Sunday. And I think that helped.
Just less we got a haul.
Yes, less we got a haul. I have contemplated on different ideas. We have mutual aid that we can call in. I hesitate in these times to call people from other cities to come in, but it might be an option going forth. Beyond that, we're, I'm trying.
The only thing they have pressing really is chip and seal.
Yeah. Yep. And we're keeping an eye on, we're trying to get that in there somewhere.
Anything else on streets?
The, I don't know what you call them, the visors or shades or whatever on the stoplights on the southwest corner of 10th and Center. There's one been missing for about, I think it's two years ago I brought it up. Now there's another one, about three quarters gone. I don't know if they're getting clipped or what, but I don't know if that's on us or that's on somebody, but it'd be nice to slide a couple of visors because it, you know, when the sun's in the right angle there, you can't see that light for anything without a visor on it, that's why they're there, so. I don't know, it's kind of funny that one was missing and then I went, second, there's another one missing, so eventually there won't be any left at all, then what?
You said 10th Street?
Yeah, 10th and Center. They're right by the chamber office, that corner. The other thing was, I don't know if this goes under street, because sidewalk, sidewalk under street?
Yes.
Right? I don't know with our demolition program, if we have any verbiage in there at all about, I mean, I'm all for cleaning up where it needs cleaned up, but the sidewalk there on Alston, where that property was just cleaned up, we just approved. The sidewalk and everything is gone, which, okay, I mean, if that makes for a better property, but I do know kids walk that way to the park, to targets and things. Do we have any?
Actually, there is. They're required to put it back.
Okay. I couldn't remember if it was in there or not, but I thought I'd ask. It does look a lot better.
It was, yeah, that sidewalk was pretty well, I think, gone.
It was pretty rough, and there was a drop.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm sure it'll be much better, I just want to make sure that if it wasn't in there that we had some sort of.
I think he's planning, he wants to put something back there. I think he's kind of waiting to approach council to see if we're willing to.
There's a lot of water standing down there after this rain last week.
I'm sure, yeah.
Really?
So maybe he's going to put a rice pad.
Well, water always did kind of.
Yeah, it did. I mean, it was just with grass, it did.
He told me he thought about building it up, but he was worried that if he built it up, then all that water would just rush right into his neighbors to the south there. And they always have a lot of issues with their water getting in their basement and everything when they have a hard rain. So he's afraid if he raised it up and everything ran across there, nothing holds it. Yeah, he's trying to, trying to look out for his neighbors, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. Is that it? Terry, you got something?
Well, I just wanted to compliment the street department on how good they're doing.
They did do a good job.
They're really doing a wonderful job. They've got a lot to do, but they're really plugging away. That's why I just wanted to mention that.
I couldn't believe how the size of some of the trees that came down last night.
Huge. A lot of old ones down there that came down.
Where are we at on the aerator out to the lake? I see there's floats out there, is it in?
Waiting on Evergy.
So we're just waiting for the electricity, it's out there?
Yes. It's not in the water, but we're waiting on Evergy to get it set up so we can put it out there.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, the floats are determining where it's going. But once we get the, I think we have to make sure it's primed and stuff like that, so we have to have electricity before we start it up.
Because people have been wondering what the, what the deal, what the floats are out there for, so.
Sarah asked me about that, and she'll have a little news article about it.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
They're jug fishing.
Yeah, well, that's what people were wondering, or if they were out there markers for the, for the, you know, boats or something, you know, canoes or whatever.
I saw one of them going across the lake.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's been a lot of speculation of coffee anyway, so what's going on?
That'd be a really nice fish, because they could pick up that brick that's at the bottom of that line.
Yeah. So anyway.
So, yeah, no, we're waiting on Evergy again, still. But they're kind of busy right now.
Okay.
Is that it? Anything else?
I have something, and I should have signed at the bottom of it, but I didn't, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to read through any of this paper I had out here on the table before the meeting. I just, I had a few concerns. After the last council meeting, the more I thought about it, and as the weeks went along, and I went to the planning commission meeting last week, and I was at the appeals board meeting when this road surface was talked about here, that's been like three months ago now, it's been a while.
Talk a little louder, Jason.
Before the COVID thing. I don't know if anybody read through this, or do you want me to read it? I can read it if you want me to.
I've read through it.
Did you? Okay. It's just, I'm concerned about the decision council made regarding the Hartley Ridge Road. Some of the issues I have is what happens when the lots get sold and the developer owns none of the properties. Will they continue to maintain the property they no longer own for how long? Are they legally obligated if the lots are all sold? What if the company is dissolved or changes hands? And the line of credit that was only, was the only real enforcement mechanism on ensuring that those roads would be completed. And as far as I can tell, and the way I understand it, is if, if, it goes away if we say that it can remain a private drive.
It does.
They won't have any, any line of credit with the bank anymore, so we won't really have any means to ensure that that road would ever be finished with concrete.
Or even maintained?
Or maintained.
Snow removed or anything?
If the plot gets changed to keep the road a private drive, the line of credit expires on September 26th. There would be no way to force them to pave it at their expense. Previous councils learned from some of the mistakes that were made on the east side subdivision and did Hartley Ridge properly with a timeline and enforcement mechanism. I fear relieving the developer, developer of this agreement will have long-term ramifications for the city and the homeowners in the subdivision. I fear the responsibility will fall on the city and future councils will be upset with the dilemma we have left them to sort out. The ULDC states that leaving the road a private drive is discouraged, and if a road remains private, it should still be installed to specifications. Other cities we have reached out to have advised us that leaving the road private is a mistake and will be a problem for future councils. In five to 10 years, the homeowners will be upset if the road is not maintained properly and will not understand why if they are paying city taxes and they are not receiving the benefits as a city maintains roads at no extra cost. I think we all know how heated these meetings can be, and I don't want to place the results of our decisions on future councils. And we can all kind of agree, we've had to deal with some issues that other councils have left for us in the past. If we are going to go down this road, we should write up a resolution so that there's no doubt what this means for future homeowners on that road. There are many details that need clarified. What is the enforcement mechanism if the developer doesn't properly maintain the road? If in the future developer doesn't maintain it, will the homeowners need to schedule repairs of the road as a group, or will each homeowner be responsible for the area adjoining their property? How will the costs be split between the various homeowners? Will we patrol it, for instance, if we get a call that someone's riding a UTV down the road or speeding down the road? This has been an issue for us on Keating Drive. If the road is paved, the future will, in the future, will these homeowners be assessed? Will it be 100% of the cost of the road like they've done years previously, or would it be a reduced amount? There have been two houses that would have been built, but backed out when they found out that the developer did not plan to finish the road in the near future. I'm concerned the subdivision will not continue to develop if some movement doesn't happen on the streets. At the last meeting, the appeals board, the appeals board, the developer was told that the board was open to allowing them to pave part of the street and do the rest when more lots were sold. They just wanted to see some movement, but did not want to put an undue financial burden on them. The developer has had multiple extensions already, and my takeaway from the meeting was that this was the last extension, and then they wanted to see some progress on the road going up the hill that keeps washing out, and maybe some work on the cul-de-sac. My takeaway from the planning commission meeting was that they had concerns about it, but were given the green light by council to make the change. If council made it clear that they would like to see the road completed as laid out in the original plat, I think it would send a strong message to the planning commission that after more research, it is not in the city's best interest in long term to change the platform its original terms. I know council changing decisions is something that we don't want to have happen on a regular basis, but I feel that we may have rushed the decision without time to think about it or research it properly. There's still time to correct this decision if council so chooses. It was an unanimous vote, so anyone can bring this up for debate again. Remember, it was the developer that came to the city and went through the process of beginning this development in place. The city did not force them into this agreement. I simply asked council to require them to live up to the original agreement that they, that they negotiated.
So they do have money in the bank to do this?
They have a line of credit.
They have a line of credit?
And that was set up so that if it didn't get completed in a certain timeline, we could basically go, right, correct to go out for bid, and then they would have to pay for it. Is how it was originally set.
That's a guarantee to this city.
Well, this is kind of a slippery slope we're starting here. It really is, it's like.
I'm afraid that we're setting the precedent that if you sign into an agreement with the city on a subdivision or development, and then it doesn't pan out a few years down the road, then you could just go renegotiate it and kind of drop it off on the city's shoulders. Because we've, because we've already, we spent $60,000, was it, of our own money towards the infrastructure out there?
More, more than sixty.
More than that.
That we paid for the infrastructure in that division.
And they paid some upfront, and then we split it roughly 50/50, if I remember, somewhere around.
It was at 60/40.
And, and we also, some of the projects, we gave them an interest-free loan.
So they're only three years into that interest-free loan, they still have to pay.
Did they use the loan already, is what you're saying?
For the infrastructure part that they paid for.
With us, yeah.
And we paid for it, and they're just paying us back?
It's in the city's interest to get development out there to pay back the infrastructure, the money that we've spent on the infrastructure out there, but what I'm afraid of is if they don't develop the roads, it gets into a thing where if they don't develop the roads, nobody wants to build out there, but if there's no way built out there, they don't want to develop the roads. And it kind of becomes a cycle. Like I say, they've had two houses that would have been built out there if there was some movement on the roads. And one of those was at the appeals board. Yes, Terry?
The city, as it stands right now, the city has a contract with it. Now, you said, you went to the planning committee, and this has been going back and forth, there's nobody sitting here that knows what's going to happen. Has this gone to our attorney? Our attorney should look at our contract and advise us on this.
Well, we kicked, we kicked it to the planning commission to.
Did he advise us on what to do?
Yeah, he advised us not to do it.
Not to do.
Not to do what?
Not to change the framework.
Not to change the plat.
We have a contract. If that's his advice, then we shouldn't be messing with what he's advising us as our legal advice for the city.
We've got a situation where ULDC is telling us not to do this. Our attorney is telling us it's not a good idea to do this. The cities that we've called and asked them about it have told us it's not a good idea to go down this road, and that's kind of where we're at. The planning commission voted to have a replat drawn up, and then they would vote on it at the next planning commission meeting. But as of right now, as far as I know, no work has started on the replating yet, so no money's been spent right now. So what I'm afraid of is if, if we wait for a while and then they get, and then the developer spends money to replat that property, and then if we decide, I don't know, if this is such a good idea, then he's going to be upset because he spent money to replat it. There's no, then there's no guarantee that the planning commission will approve the replat either. But I think that, my sense, and I didn't talk to any of them, but my sense is that they thought that a 7-0 vote of the council was a pretty, was basically giving the green light that this is what we would like them to do.
To replat it?
Well, that's, if we're going to keep it a private drive, then you have to replat it. You have to draw up another, another plat. Because in the original, it was supposed to be concrete or asphalt.
Seven inches of concrete.
Yeah, concrete, so it'd have to be changed.
Nobody will buy a lot out there if it turns private.
Well, and that's what I'm concerned about.
There's no value to the property.
I'm afraid you'll end up with a situation that those all get sold, and then the developer kind of walks away from it, and then you've got 10 people out there trying to figure out amongst themselves, who's going to pay when they need gravel, who's going to pay when you've got a pothole where a rain comes through and washes out that drive?
Who's going to pay for snow removal?
And snow removal and, and all that, and I think we're leaving, I think we're, we're going to have a mess. The future council's going to have a problem 10 years down the road, I'm afraid.
Well, I have a question and a thought. The question is, other places, how, okay, we have other private streets in town, and I have a vague idea how Keating Drive is run because it's new, but what about the former 11th Terrace or Prairie Lane or those? Do they have a compact of landowners? How do they do that?
I have no idea, we don't do anything with it.
I mean, I see that they get relocked.
We inherited that because we annexed that property. Keating Drive is owned by the people who rent out all the houses, so they have total control.
Right.
And their road was built to standard. It had to be built to standard, and it is built to standard, so that's totally different from what's being asked now.
And see, this seems like an especially bad case for a private road because it's a through road. Are there any other through roads that are private in this town? I don't think so. I drove through, hadn't thought about it. So theoretically, it would be through traffic.
Right. But there again, do they, they don't have to put the whole road in the whole 100% way, do they?
The appeals board, when I went to the meeting, my takeaway from it was that the appeals board was more than willing. They said they didn't want to put an undue financial burden on them, and I think it even states in the plat that you can't do that. But they would like to see some movement on getting that road finished going up the hill, and maybe the cul-de-sac, where they have houses right now. And then as more lots got sold, then they could finish it out. But they weren't telling them that they had to do the whole thing, and they also know that if you put all the curbing and everything in, then you don't know where the drives are going to be. Now, the curbing in that area and the cul-de-sac is already pretty much there. So if they do build something there, they're going to be cutting that curbing and putting in drives and knock down curbs and stuff anyways.
The curbing's laid one up the hill too already.
Plus, like you said, there've been extensions, and there was a lot of, well, we want the ground to settle one day, and that.
There's been like three, there's been, I think, three years of extensions, I believe, at this point, with no movement on it at all.
Five.
Has it been five years of extensions? It's been a few years it's been extended out.
So what's our option? I mean, if we feel like this is a bad idea, all in all, we've kind of come back thinking it's a bad idea, that we're going to get nothing but trouble at some time or another put in our laps again, you know, people being upset, what's our option? What do we have to do to get them to at least put concrete down where there are houses and where that hill is?
Well, if it doesn't get replatted and the appeals board does give them an extension, they either do it, or we can put it out for bid and then end up paying for it with their line of credit.
So how do we rescind what we voted on last time?
Make a new motion.
Yeah.
And anybody can do it since we're using yours.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody voted for it. So anybody can bring it back to the table.
I just don't want us having to pick up somebody else's mess again. You know, it seems like we're kind of getting into a habit, but I also don't want to put these guys in too much financial distress either. But if they already have the line of credit, and if we're not saying, do the whole thing, we're saying, do what needs to be done correctly, you know, I don't think that as a council, we're asking for too much, because.
I think if there was some movement out there, I think they'd even want to have to sell some lots.
Probably.
Is the thing.
They wrote off two lots.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Yeah, the part, the infrastructure's already in out there.
We made our investment.
Yes, we made our investment in it.
Say, ours is down. I was gonna say, ours is down. It's time they come up and meet us at the table.
Okay, so what do we, how do we do that?
Did we give, did we make a motion before? Did we make a motion to direct?
Yeah.
Or did we just send it back?
You made a motion to send it back to, to allow it to become a private drive, so now I would assume you'd have to make a motion that says, um, the council does not want to approve a private drive. It was established. See, that was what the original plat, you guys do the dedications and the easements and the dedication is a street. So we've already named the street. If it's not gonna be a street, that causes another hole.
So we would, you can make a motion to proceed as originally.
As the original plat, correct.
All right, well, I'd make a motion, we proceed as originally platted and not replat the property.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Do we want a roll call on this one maybe?
Okay.
Yes, do a roll call.
Okay. Pipia?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Baikman?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
ATO?
ATO. And that is all I had on the streets. Has it been got anything else?
So the cause of, really the cause of this probably was the developer backing out the contract? That's what's the main?
Basically, I mean, they, like, well, Terry says five, five years they've got extensions. I mean, originally it was to settle and then it was, you know, this and that, but.
They, they know how to pull.
So what happens if somebody backs out the contract? I mean, what, there's no penalties or nothing?
We exercise, we can exercise on that. That's why we required them to have a line of credit. We exercise the right to go and use that line of credit on their street.
I see.
So we could hire someone to pour the street for 250 up to 200.
Now, if we, well, they very well.
They do wonderful streets, they do streets all over.
Make sure they do it right.
And that's the problem, if we allow it to become a private drive, that line of credit goes away. So any leverage that we have on them to get this finished completely goes away.
And, you know, and we need to let them know that they don't have to pour the whole thing, just.
Yes.
And that, and that'll be up to the appeals board, but I'm, I would about, that's the, the appeals board.
The appeals board said, come back to us, we're done, start pouring.
But the appeals board also wants it done by?
September.
September.
Movement by September.
Movement by September.
Okay. They want it all done by September, that's gonna be pretty tough on them because they're busy.
Well, as it stands right now, if they were not to go back to the appeals board, yes, they would be required to get it done by September 26th or something like that. If, per se, they started movement on it right now, they could probably go back to the appeals board and be more amicable to them.
Cause I just, I just don't know if they can get it done by that date with how busy them guys are.
Right.
I remember, I think they originally asked for like a year extension, but the appeals board didn't want it to go that long.
There's a bunch of settling when it got that rain and then rained again, settled some more. Should be about settled out by now.
I think it ought to be settled by now.
Pretty good settling has happened, yes.
Okay. Right, nothing else on the street? Water, wastewater treatment? Parks and Rec?
Yeah, what is the rec director meeting?
21st.
21st, what time?
Seven.
Seven.
6:30. I think it's 6:30.
I think it's 6:30.
Hey, I'm pretty sure it's 6:30.
Remember it's 20.
Yeah, it's.
Did we share that on our?
Was it 20?
Yeah, you shared it.
21st. I know it's 21st.
And it's in the paper, there's an ad in the paper.
Some reason I thought 6 o'clock was on there too.